Okay, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands as our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you. And welcome to the City of Deco Bay, January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five. Councilor Lee, here would you call the board? Councilor Beasley?
Here.
Councilor Harmon?
Here.
Councilor Bowen?
Here.
Councilor Reck?
Here.
Mayor Short?
Here.
Councilor Sullivan?
Here.
Councilor Watson?
Here.
You have one.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I do have one, uh, change to the agenda. Uh, I've been asked to move in under, under new business, under five, we put some ex- organs to the first position of our under new business. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Has everyone had a, a chance to review the consent agenda? We did review the consociable, I did go over that, and that looked complete. We did have a change to the expenditure report as well.
Yes, my apologies, apparently I had a double two in the, uh, expenditure report. We do not have twenty five million in the banks, and we have sixteen million. So, we're still looking pretty good, it's not the problem. Kathy was like, I don't think we have that much.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. Is there a, uh, motion to accept the consent agenda submitted? I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved just second to accept the consent agenda. Is there a discussion on the motion? Yeah, I'm having trouble looking at computer. Um, but I have seen a expenditure, we have two of them. Some property, something. Yes, that's the, uh, construction on Highway, on the base street. That, that property is, is that? Yeah. Okay, so, uh, thank you. Any other questions, only?
Uh, I did have a question on this, just because I was curious about what program these financial reports are, are produced on. You mentioned that there was the type of where we went from, uh, forty five, forty two million to sixteen million, I think?
Twenty, oh, to sixteen, yes. On that particular one, right. So, the, um, that's not under our consociable, that was the profit and loss portion?
Right, that, that's what I'm looking at, yeah.
Right, so, the, under the water, instead of twenty, um, on the first very, first few lines are the, um, accounts for the bank accounts. If you see twenty five million dollars in the water one, that should be two hundred and twenty five thousand, not two million. Pardon me, everything is asking where this data comes from?
Oh, okay.
The expenditures in the revenue at the below portion come out of vision directly from rewriting revenue expenditure reports, which I've provided before. Uh, but they're very, there's a lot of information in them, so I took it, that data from there. The, um, revenue comes directly from the, or bank statements come directly from the bank statements.
And, and you put this together by hand, then?
Yes. There is no ability in the current software to run that type of report. I can run a revenue expenditure report, which is, is helpful, it's a revenue, it's, I have to run two reports to get to what you want, I'm not gonna do that. Um, this just takes, it makes it simpler, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
And I usually double check the below numbers, and I didn't double check the top.
Any other comments, or is, is there a motion, uh, oh? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Oh, wait. And this evening, we have Jenna Wallace, who is our Lincoln County District District Attorney, do you wanna come on up?
Yes, thank you.
Jenna has a PowerPoint presentation for us this morning. Thank you.
Yes, thank you for having me. And pardon me, Ms. Wallace, if you have pressed that button there?
Yeah. Okay, let me see if I can share this and do it correctly.
It's coming.
So, um, I will not seek out much of your time. I first wanted to just introduce myself, my name is Jenna Wallace, and I'm your Lincoln County District Attorney. Um, I was appointed by the governor, um, when the past DA left back in June of last year. Um, and I just started my official four-year elected term, um, a couple weeks ago. Um, my, my idea really is to go around to all of, uh, the state councils and just have this kind of meeting moment, um, where you can see my face, I can see your face, and I can give you kind of an update of where the district attorney's office is, um, kind of over this past year, um, to kind of get a good feel of what we do here in Lincoln County. Um, and I, I know I only have ten minutes, so I'm going to speak fast, um, but if you have any questions, please let me know, I love talking about what we get to do here at the district attorney's office. Um, this is just kind of an organizational chart, um, I won't put a detail on this, but really, I answer to you, I answer to, um, the citizens of Lincoln County. And ultimately, you chose to put me in this position. Um, in my position, I, my office is around thirty three, um, individuals. Typically, it's me plus ten, um, deputy district attorneys. Um, I also have support staff, um, we run a child, uh, or not child, but a, um, private and advocates, um, unit as well, as well as child support as well. So, we kind of have our hands in a couple different areas, um, here in Lincoln County. Um, but primarily, this is what my office makeup looks like, um, on an any day, any given day. Um, so sometimes people ask what the Lincoln District Attorney's Office does. Um, obviously, you probably have heard of the District Attorney's Office before, you might be, you know, more familiar than that. But ideally, on a, any given, a given day, um, we not only review, um, police reports and cases that are referred to us, we also prosecute them. So, a lot of times, we're reviewing police reports that may not, there might have insufficient evidence in, we then decline to file those. Um, and then the ones that there is sufficient evidence, we do end up filing charges here in our local circuit court. Um, we do that for all of the municipalities here in Lincoln County, that includes our sheriff's office, um, it includes Newport Police Department, Lincoln City Police Department, Tule Police Department, and the Oregon State Police. Um, as far as our criminal, um, criminal filing statistics, I would find this to be interesting, this is just over the last four years. Um, you can see in two thousand and twenty two, we actually had a particular spike, um, nineteen, uh, one thousand nine hundred and four cases charged. I will tell you, I actually moved here and began working with the District Attorney's Office in two thousand and twenty two. Uh, when I got here, we had about eight hundred cases that were pending review. And so, one of my big, um, I guess, accomplishments is that I, I got through that backlog, um, we don't have that backlog today. Um, and that is, I think, why there's such a big spike in two thousand and twenty two is because I was really, um, focused on making sure that crimes that had not been prosecuted in prior years before, um, were able to, I guess, seek prosecution in those cases. Um, you can see, last year, we were a little bit above, um, two thousand and twenty three, um, and I anticipate we're probably going to be somewhere on trend, um, this upcoming year, obviously, it's a little early to tell. But that's just kind of an overview of how many criminal cases we are filing every single year here in Lincoln County. Um, this is just a good overview of the types of cases that we're seeing here in Lincoln County. You can see up at the top is our property crime cases. Um, I'm trying to move this somehow, so I can see it. But, um, we have, last year, we filed about six hundred property crime-related cases, those are by far, um, our biggest types of cases here, that includes burglary, theft, robbery, um, criminal mischief, things like that, that really do impact our communities on a pretty big scale. Um, you can also see the next largest is our alcohol and drug-related cases, so those kind of range any types of cases, but we had almost four hundred and fifty cases where individuals were either under the influence, um, of alcohol or drugs at the time that they were arrested or committing these crimes. Um, you know that we have some pretty amazing treatment providers in our community, um, and this is very clear that we do have, that is something that our community is plagued with, is kind of those alcohol and drug issues. Um, as we go down, assault, um, is our second highest, and we had a little over three hundred and twenty cases, which were assault, um, assault in nature, but also included domestic violence. We had about a hundred and fifty cases last year that we filed that were domestic violence on relationships. Um, as you can see, as we kind of go down, um, it does, I guess, wind a little bit down, um, we have about fifty juvenile cases, and so, anyone between the age of twelve and, um, seventeen that commits a crime that would be an adult crime here in Lincoln County, we prosecute those in juvenile court, um, oftentimes, and, um, I'm primarily the DA that does those, I did those before I became DA, and I actually really enjoy those cases, so I, I stuck around for that. Um, but that's an interesting process that we, we don't always talk about, right? The juveniles that are committing crimes, um, but that is something that my office handles. Um, we also had three homicide cases, you probably might have caught those in the news. Um, and as far as our child sex crimes, we had about thirty six, adult sex crimes, we had sixteen. Part of the district attorney's office is also establishing a participating in our multidisciplinary team. Um, you might have heard of those, but we have those for child, um, child abuse cases, we have that for elder abuse cases, we have that for, um, sexual assault cases. Um, we also have a human trafficking task force, as well as a domestic, um, abuse response team. So, those are, um, multidisciplinary, um, meetings that happen monthly, sometimes bimonthly, where all of our community partners get together and really talk about how we're addressing these, some of the most serious crimes that we see in our community. We also represent the state in our specialty treatment courts, you've probably heard a lot about this in the news. Um, we have some of the most robust treatment courts, I believe, in all of Oregon. Um, we currently have four treatment courts, we have drug courts, um, we have twenty eight active participants in drug court, we have three openings, you can tell we're pretty full there. Hope court has thirteen active participants, eight openings. Hope court is a situation where primarily, they do have a drug or alcohol substance use, um, issue. Um, they should be going to prison based on their charges, um, but the community partners really look at them and analyze them and think, maybe if we get them engaged in drug and alcohol treatment, we can safely supervise them in the community, and maybe they'll never have to go serve that prison sentence. So, that prison time really just hangs over their head. Um, and it can be a really great motivating factor, right? A lot of people don't want to go to prison, that's not a normal thing that people want to do. Um, and so, we've seen really great success through our treatment courts, um, primarily our drug and hope court, they have incredible statistics.
So, the drug court are for those that have, are in prison?
No, both of these are individuals, um, that typically have some type of drug, um, or alcohol substance use issue. Um, sometimes they may be going to prison, as in, um, we oftentimes have repeat property offenders, um, so if you have so many, um, property crime predicates, when you go commit the burglary this time around, the, the statutes and the law says that you should go to prison for eighteen months. And what we do in these types of treatment courts is we say, we're gonna hang that eighteen months over your head, and if you don't follow, you know, everything that you're supposed to do in our treatment court system, then you go serve the prison sentence. If you successfully treat, complete the treatment court system, then you don't serve any of those, any of that time in prison.
I'm still not understanding the difference between drug and hope.
So, drug court is primarily, um, focused on individuals that have a drug problem. Hope court is very similar, except it normally has a downward dispensational departure, which is that hanging the prison time over their head. Um, so they're just, they're very similar, they're actually run by the same judge, they just have different titles. We also have a family support court, so those are for individuals that, um, have a, um, a DHS case or a Department of Human Services case, so DHS might be involved because they have children that are, um, either in the system or maybe being abused or neglected. Um, and then they also sometimes have a criminal case. So, that is a treatment court specific for really families, um, to really come beside them and figure out what resources they need in our community, um, to get themselves out of the situation that they're in. And then we also have mental health and wellness court, uh, which obviously deals with individuals who have mental health disorders or things like that, um, and that's run by Judge Butler, um, at our, at our, um, at the circuit court level. Um, we also have two additional specialty dockets that are pretty, um, I guess, unique to Lincoln County. We have a domestic violence, um, court, and that's run by a presiding Judge Cheryl Loffler. Um, they meet, um, have compliance reviews throughout, um, their cases, and primarily the idea there is really to have higher accountability for individuals that need to undergo domestic violence counseling. Um, we also have a competency court, so unfortunately, I think probably plaguing America right now is mental health issues, and we do see a lot of individuals who have lower-level crimes that are not necessarily mentally fit to stand on trial. So, this competency, competency court really is a, a room full of community partners trying to figure out what services we can provide an individual, um, who's unfit in the criminal justice system, to make sure that they're not continuing to pick up new charges and new cases and things like that. Um, I'll speed through this, I know, I'm sorry, I'm a talker. The DA's office also handle, handles a major crime team and crash team call-ups, so any homicide investigation, um, we have a crime team for that, any, um, vehicular crash teams where someone is severely injured or deceased, um, those are also call-ups that we go on. We handle officer-involved shootings and any use of force investigations. We also handle civil commitment proceedings, um, last year, we had eighteen of those here in Lincoln County. We present to our grand jury any felony charges twice a week, that's Tuesday and Thursday. We also help out on death investigations, um, we're part of a DA legislative committee. We, um, have crime victim services and rights that we handle on a daily basis. Um, I also participate in roll board or PSRB review hearings on cases that have been adjudicated. And I also handle expungements, um, Senate Bill eight nineteen and clemency, clemency applications as well. So, we're pretty busy down there in Newport, um, we do a lot of things. Um, like, two more slides and I will stop talking. Um, our crime victim advocates, um, that is part of my office, it's one of the things that I'm most proud of, um, all, all victims of crimes have certain constitutional rights here in Oregon, and that advocacy unit really is there to make sure that we are following those rights, that the victim knows what rights they have, and that we are, um, alerting them of those rights. Um, we also provide trauma and force services and support to victims, and we see that a lot in the person-to-person type crimes. Um, we also assist victims in, um, gathering up documents and then submitting restitution requests, so if they are damaged, if they have damaged vehicle, or they had to go to hospital for medical bills, we're responsible really for gathering up all those documents from the victim and then presenting that to the court, so that the victim stay full again through restitution. Um, in two thousand and twenty four, we served a little over two thousand individual crime victims here in Lincoln County, and we provided over twenty eight thousand of crime victim services. So, that's picking up the phone and letting them know there's a court date next week, that sends them an email letting them know the case is resolved, those types of things. We had over twenty eight thousand contacted victims last year. We also are, um, part of the child enforcement, uh, child support enforcement, so we are responsible for collecting current and past due child support payments. Um, I have one DDA, one deputy district attorney who was assigned to that, she managed about six hundred cases, um, which, if you do the math, according to the experts here in the state, means that we're approximately serving about twelve hundred, um, children here in Lincoln County. Um, last year, we collected a little one point six million dollars, um, in past due child support. And what's great is that different DA's offices do it a little bit differently, some have their child support enforcement within the district attorney's office, some have handed over that unit to the state, and it's done at the state level. But what's great about being in my office is that these are actually children who are living in our community, so the money's coming back to our community, to the kids who are living here among us. Um, and we also have that direct services, right? So, parents who are needing help with this can come directly to my office and get help and not have to travel out of county to, uh, you know, get services and things like that. So, um, I'm pretty proud of what Lincoln County has going on, I don't, I can't take all the credit because it's been, you know, doing well, um, before me, but, um, it's been a really great six months, I'm excited to serve you for the next four years, and, um, I think that's all I have, unless you have questions. I hope that wasn't too speedy, or I didn't take you long.
No, it's perfect, Jenna, that's what a, an amazing accomplishment, really. I'm so thrilled that you're here and, and light us tonight on all that you're involved with and the, the services that we have available for citizens, it's really wonderful. Are there questions for Jenna this evening?
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, I feel the same way as you do about our new DA, very proud of her. I have one question for you. This deflection program, what's the status of that? What is briefly gonna do for the town?
So, um, the, essentially, possession of controlled substances up until September of last year, um, was at the violation level. So, individuals that you would come into contact with who had residue amounts or less than a, a gram or two grams, depending on what the drug were, um, received it, essentially a hundred dollar fine. So, it was recriminalized in September, and with that, the state implemented this deflection program that Lincoln County chose to be a part of. And the whole idea with, with the deflection program is that, um, we wanna take those individuals who really do have a substance use, um, disorder and get them treatment on the front end rather than the back end of the criminal justice system. Um, you've probably read in the news, there was, you know, hot, hot topic about where the deflection program was, what we needed to get off the floor and running. We did ultimately get a deflection coordinator hired, she started December thirty first, so she's been with us less than a month right now. Um, and our deflection program is off the ground and running. Um, what we've run into though is the way life works, right? Is I can't guarantee who's going to be arrested, I can't guarantee who police is going to come into contact with. And so, about the month leading up to it starting, we had all of these cases that would have been perfect for deflection, but we didn't have a deflection program. And now we have a deflection program, the law enforcement hasn't come into contact with individuals that would fit into the program. So, what we've done in this past weekend, especially with the help of our deflection coordinator, has been incredibly proactive on wanting to see individuals get engaged in treatment. Um, we've kind of figured out a way to not only have it law enforcement-led, which means law enforcement contacts an individual on things that they're a good candidate, but also having it, um, I guess, deflection-led as well. So, my coordinator now is reviewing, um, all of the individuals who are brought into custody every day and determining whether or not there are individuals on that list that would fit within the deflection parameters. And then if there is an individual in that situation, she, my deflection coordinator, is actually reaching out to the treatment provider and saying, hey, we think this person is eligible for deflection, will you go meet them at the jail? And really, I'm hoping, I'm hopeful, and I think we're all hopeful, that this will really open up different avenues to get individuals engaged in the deflection program and ultimately engaged in drug and alcohol treatment before they have that, those contacts with, with the criminal justice system. So, I don't have any, you know, wonderful statistics at this point, um, but I'm really hopeful that this will really open up the number of cases that we see getting referred to the question.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, and good luck.
Yes, thank you so much for letting me come and talk to you about this. I'm gonna get off screen.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Um, let's go on to commission and committee reports, emergency preparedness committee? I don't think we, you don't win the safety, okay. Harvard Commission, nothing, the safety, planning, I don't see planning, I don't see parks, but we're gonna do parks later, and salmon enhancement, but I don't see papers. Okay, that was quick. Um, was that? Oh, did you wanna do salmon enhancement?
I can tell you we've got, we're down to a couple dozen eggs, that's it.
What happened? Oh. Okay.
They turned into the hush.
Oh, okay.
Good things happen.
Um, I'll open the floor for the committee's meeting. Um, everybody on the board for public, public comments? These will be for those not related to the agenda. Yeah. Okay. Uh, under new business, we'll go down to number five, the first abreathing of the amendment to ordinance number three five five dash twenty five, amendment ordinance three four six dash twenty four, updating the scope of community. Section three, two point two zero, general powers and duties, specifically updating the scope of community event planning for the city of Deco Bay. Is there a motion to accept reading this by title only? I will make a motion to read ordinance three five five dash two five five title only. Is there a second? I'll second this. Is there a discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
I see the city council, but I can't hear anything, let's see.
Are we muting?
Yeah, we are muting.
I couldn't hear, but she's pressing her mute button, thinking that's... Um, we do have a presentation from Robert this evening, he's the chair of our parks commission.
It's gonna be twofold.
Okay.
Mayor, council?
Yes.
Just briefly, uh, we're asking to, uh, listen to the commission, like the council removed the restrictions to prevent us from taking on crab feed. And, uh, I think I mentioned to you at the last meeting that I had some concerns about volunteerism and what have you, and I had missed the meeting they had last week, so we're gonna have this stuff up in a minute, but there was more than twenty five volunteers, the commission was there, everybody was on board. And, uh, I think one of the councillors had a, um, question about, it's not necessarily the city's responsibility, which it isn't, but a lot of other cities such as, well, Lincoln City, which I'm also on the parks board, do a tremendous amount of things, Mellersburg, Albany, Grants Pass, all those celebration events that the city helps assist, but they're basically run by the commission, but they're assisted by the city, funding, et cetera. But that we don't have the entire burden, and through Zoe and the other commission members that we have, there is a huge amount of support to get crab feed, we'd like to have it as a liberal, and what I would like this time is for Zoe to come up and talk about the meeting briefly, and, uh, about the excitement from the people that were there. Zoe? I need my time.
Oh.
Hello. Thanks for having us tonight. Um, first wanted to say, we have a few of the volunteers who attended our meeting last week, um, in attendance tonight, if you guys would raise your hands, just so we could see a show. So, a little round of applause to that, thanks for coming out. Sometimes it's difficult with jobs and with things to, to get to the meetings here tonight, so I'm really excited that we had a good amount of people show up for support. So, we had a meeting in the last week, and we could go tonight, and we had twenty five people in attendance. We had a very positive reaction from those people, the community really wants this event to happen. So, of those twenty five people, we had a good amount, I'd say about half that already previously, um, volunteered with the crab feed in the past. Um, so we have a lot of people that have a foundation with the, the volunteer requirements and what needs to happen to be able to take on the event.
And so, if you would just add, you put a shout on Facebook, because that was not everybody who indicated to you that would wanna help, right?
Yeah, so, um, besides that, of that twenty five in attendance, we had multiple other people that had reached out saying they wanted to attend that meeting but couldn't, but were willing to volunteer in the future. Um, so we, the parks really just wants to step up and fill the hole that, like, this event has been missing in our community. We have so many people that want this event to happen, and we have people that want to make this event happen, and that was the biggest kind of hurdle that we needed to pass is, do we have the people to make this event happen, so the, the burden doesn't fall on the city? And with that first meeting, it was about a week's notice, so it was a very short notice meeting, we had a huge turnout for a short notice meeting, and we believe that once we're able to say, because right now, there's a lot of, you know, is it gonna happen, is it not gonna happen, we need to, to pass, you know, we need to get approval to make it happen, once we can say, this is gonna happen, that we're gonna do it, we think that we'll have even more people coming forward and saying they wanna help. And, yeah, any questions from the council?
Yes, good, thank you. And so, um, I guess what I don't understand is, is this something that you're expecting the Parks and Recreation Department to coordinate every year, or are we still trying to find, like, a chamber organization or something that, because, you know, we really, when we passed this ordinance, it was only ten months ago.
Yeah.
And, um, we really wanted the Parks and Recreation Department to focus on, um, things that would benefit the residents of Deco Bay. You know, like, things, you know, like movies in the park, or, you know, bridge at this yoga or whatever at the city. And, and this was not something you wanted, and it was unanimous, you know, it was like, this is for residents, this is not, and I understand there's other communities that have, but they also have chambers that they have. So, what is your expectation, and I love the enthusiasm, and certainly, you know, there's so much momentum, you know, I can't see, you know, saying no for this year, but this is not what I think we were anticipating when we passed this ordinance.
Yeah, so I'd say that the, you know, the Parks and Recreation Commission wants to take this over for this year and for years to the future. I think that this event truly is a community event. I think it brings in a lot of people, it brings in a lot of tourists, but at its heart, it really serves the community as a whole. Not only, you know, has it brought so many community members together to try and organize it, I got to meet so many people that I've never met before, and, you know, people that live in, might say, neighborhood that I'm getting to work together on this with, but so many people that I know in the community want this event to happen, they wanna come to this event and support it, because it isn't just for tourists, it isn't just to get revenue, and which it will do, um, part of working at a restaurant locally, every year, we look forward to crab feed meetings, we know it's gonna be a busy weekend for us. So, it's gonna benefit the community, it's gonna benefit the businesses, and it's, it's really gonna serve the people, like, so many community members will be in attendance, and a lot of community members will also be volunteering with it. So, I think that, you know, the, the Parks Commission wants to expand the, the events that serve the community. So, I think that, you know, the, the parks commission wants to expand the, the events that serve the community, like doing movies in the park, doing Christmas tree lights, we have so many other exciting ideas, but we noticed the, the whole of the community that the crab feed has left, and we wanna build that.
So, um, this ordinance also is proposing, uh, salmon bake, it's also proposing wooden boat show.
What clarification?
It doesn't propose that, it just says that, it just rules it, so it's an option that parks commission is not proposing on taking anything but the crab feed.
Yes.
Well, I don't... They can always just say crab feed, but they're not actually taking the salmon, um, or the boat.
Okay, but that goes without question, we do think.
Yeah. Yeah, right now we're just talking about the crab feed, it's what we've been, you know, preparing for and reaching out to the community for.
And so, um, I know, um, this Beasley last time asked about insurance, is this then because it's gonna be the city that, the city's insurance, but I don't see that on the, uh... It's already covered under the...
Yeah, what I was told is it would be covered within the city's insurance.
It's covered under our city.
Yeah, another thing that was, um, asked by Councilman Beasley was, um, a marketing plan. Um, I drew up a marketing plan, I don't know if we, if I can pass this around.
Yeah, it, it was really blown up, I didn't realize, that's why I apologize, so we have printed it and it blew things up.
Yeah, so... But we do have a marketing plan, um, and this is, um, a lot of this planning, a lot of like the marketing, this is just for a foundation, so what we're doing this year is, or what we're wanting to do obviously this year, is a foundational event. This is something where, while it's a, it is an established event, we're really building it from the ground up. A lot of us on the commission haven't, I mean, a lot of us have volunteered before, I myself haven't, so we're learning all of this. We want it to be an event that becomes self-sufficient, it becomes, you know, it goes better and better every year, it can evolve. Um, we just want to get it off of before this year and have it go, you know, good in the future.
And what was the revenue from, um, past crab feeds? We have no idea.
Yeah, that would, it was associated with the chamber in the past, so essentially, it's, you know, it's a new event. It's a, a new event for the city, and, you know, having the, the parks commission put it on, that's one of the hurdles we've had to jump through, is the, you know, not associating it with the chamber anymore. It's not gonna be a chamber event, it's gonna be a, you know, a city event, and it's a way for the city to connect with the community. And, you know, that direct connection will be really positive, I think. Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes.
You know, I've noticed that, uh, you had included that marketing plan, and, uh, Mr. Chairman, you recognized my concerns about, uh, just my concerns about city involvement in this, and I appreciate it. For those reasons, I am very grateful, and I'm, uh, inclined to, uh, support this effort, just to see what happens. But, uh, I do have some concerns on this, and one is that it is absolutely, in my mind, uh, not experimental, this whole thing looks a little experimental to me, but it's not experimental, the city paid back for this. Uh, we are, I don't know if anybody else shares my opinion, but I believe that we are under great financial pressure right now, in the sense that we, we have not had an audit in five years. And that means that we really don't know where we are, and we're, we're assuming all sorts of accelerated costs these days. And so we can't, I don't know where this twenty thousand dollars is gonna come from, we have to front this, or all I'm concerned is that we get it back. Uh, that's, that's the most important thing to me. In fact, if you guys could make some nice profit on this, I think that would be the best thing. Because we are an enterprise city, we have no property taxes.
Yes.
So we have to make profits at this, at everything we do, harbor, crab feed, whatever it is we're involved in, uh, we have to make money out of it. So we have to be paid back. Uh, number two is, our staff has its hands full. I can't express that, if, there's one thing I have discovered here, is that, and I've witnessed it here, is, is we dole out jobs and assignments and priorities to our staff, they cannot be involved in these events. Uh, they get sucked into these events, and above all, we cannot have our city recorder, uh, you know, diverted from her task down there. That's just my opinion. But, uh, we're, you know, so you have to carry the weight on this thing. We have to do all the planning.
Absolutely.
Avoid city hall, if, if you can. Finally, uh, uh, where we get our money on investments like this is through heads and bets. When people come here and stay at motels or rural work.
Absolutely.
And in your marketing, if you can keep that in mind, uh, that, you know, uh, maybe even run a list of, of, uh, some of our hotels, motels, and dinners, and B and Bs, and things like that.
Absolutely. One thing that I really wanted to do was integrate, you know, the businesses in with this event, because, um, like I said earlier, working at a restaurant in this town, one thing that I always noticed and we always planned for, we had extra people on the staff, was for crab feed weekend, because we knew there was gonna be an influx of people. And so one thing I wanted to do was integrate some of the businesses and have, um, crab feed specials. So, some of the restaurants are all, you know, reach out to all of the restaurants in town and see if they could come up with a crab special that we can then promote. And then also, very good idea about seeing with the, uh, you know, accommodations, how we not be a way to integrate as well. Because we don't want it to just be, you know, an, an event on its own, it's supposed to integrate with the whole community, with all of the businesses, and it really should lift everybody up.
I'd like to address the budget portion of it, you do have a budget of seventy-five thousand dollars every year, and so it would come out of that money and would be paid back to, and for future renovations to our parks and roads and that type of thing, I would think that would, if we had extra funds, that would be wonderful.
Absolutely.
Any other comments? Questions?
Do you want anybody else, does anybody else wanna speak on this? I, I really moved it, so if, if you wanted to speak, we can speak on it.
Any of our volunteers wanna step forward?
I don't need to come up.
Oh.
If you speak, we do have to have a guy, and sign in, um, they don't have to sign in because they're presented, if you wouldn't mind just printing your name and...
You wanna put my name here?
There's a one up there in the cup, sorry about that.
Alright. I'm Sandy, and I'm new here, um, I've only been here a couple of years. And I chose this little town because it's so quaint and friendly, and I come from a small town in Colorado. And when I moved to Colorado, to that small town, which was Bailey, they had all these events happening. The families came together, everybody knew everyone, it was wonderful. Um, the businesses made great money off of it, and the restaurants and everything. Slowly through the thirty-five years that I lived there, that one got kicked off, that one got kicked off, that one kicked off, and pretty much the whole town just kinda shut down, people don't even know each other now. And, um, it pretty much became a veteran community, or people took jobs in Denver and they came home to sleep in Bailey, and nobody knew anybody, so when I saw this, I was like, yay! This is great, it's really good, I think it'd be wonderful for the community.
Thank you, Sandy.
Yes.
Okay, is there further discussions with council on this change to the ordinance?
Yes.
Um, I am understanding the enthusiasm and the role that, you know, volunteerism helps bring people together. But I am not at all for expanding mission statement that may be ordinance like we had ten months ago, crafted. So I'm thinking that, um, where the line in red is, which is page forty-four of one hundred and ten of the agenda, at the direction of the city council and under the oversight of the city administration recorder, participate in development and implementation of events primarily serving the residents of depot bay, except for the crab feed, period. And it means that we're not gonna expand into taking on the salmon bake, the wooden boat festival, the fleet of flowers. I really want it to be contained. It really, the parks and recreation department hasn't done anything specifically yet to bolster events for residents. And ten months ago, we were unanimous in saying that's the intent of the council. So, um, maybe we take on the, um, the crab feed and let's see what happens, but I am not for changing this, this ordinance as, as it's written right now, except for what I just said, except for the crab feed, if we're gonna make it, or we just allow it to go for this one year and then revisit.
Pardon me, I'm sorry, I was looking for the page number, so I didn't get exactly what you said, what did you wanna, like, uh, was it, you told me?
Well, I'm just suggesting, I, I keep on wanting to limit it, participate in development and implementation of events primarily serving the residents of depot bay, except for the crab feed. And I totally disagree with that, because our salmon bake is what brings us famous, and this group is willing to take on the salmon bake as well. And I think, you know, if they are willing and able to make these successful and put money into our coffers, why the hell not? Because that's the role of a chamber of commerce. It is not, it's a role of a city to bring us together. Not when we have so many other things that we're not accomplishing. Like what?
Audits.
That's part of our, our city administrators. Update to the comprehensive plan.
Well, and our city administrators is, is in charge of this.
There's a lot of things that we need to do, update the comprehensive plan, we, we just need to do a lot of work. And while we have an enthusiastic bunch of volunteers now, we have seen how the commission volunteers, committee volunteers go up and down, and up and down, and up and down, and I just don't want to commit ourselves.
Definitely disagree.
I understand all of your guys' points of view, I, I think that it should be amended as it's written, because if we put specifically crab feed in there, let's say if they're not successful this year, then we're tied to it next year, right? So if we leave it as it is, it's broad, it doesn't actually commit us to crab feed or the salmon bake or any of these other community events that have been going on in depot bay for a while. Um, I think that if we leave it, or if we amend it to this, then it, it keeps both ideas open. So if the crab feed's successful, great, we can do it again another year, three years down the road, if you have no volunteers, there's no commitment, because it's not specifically stated up there. And I would agree that, I think it's great what the commission wants to take this on, because, um, there's no one doing it. Bring, easily just bring a lot of people to town and we bring the community together.
And we have another event, the, uh, first night out that's been hugely successful for the last two years, and our parks and recreation has been involved in helping support that, and that's one of the reasons it's been so successful, is that they have stepped up and are making it happen. We had pet photos last year, that was so much fun, and again, our volunteers stepped up, and it was a blast, and seeing all those puppies out there, it, it just gave me goosebumps.
Mayor, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I also think that allowing them to do this and see if they can be successful at it is a good plan, and if at some point organizing these events takes away too much energy from the parks commission to what the parks commission usually does, then we could form a separate organization just for events.
Yes, council?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I think it's kind of important to keep in mind that while we are enthusiastic about these things, and while we appreciate the enthusiasm of volunteers, I look at this document and the budget, and I can tell that this is the work of our city staff, and...
Actually, it's not, I put together the budget.
Okay, uh, that's, that's gonna be, but I, I'm just, I'm, what I'm concerned about is getting our staff involved, getting our city reporter involved on, on, uh, running this thing, it says right in here that she's, she'll be responsible.
She would oversee to the commitment to the financial, and that's it. The committee has already stated that they are willing to take this on, and that's the thing that she would oversee, is to make sure that it's following the budget. Yes, Zoe?
And I just wanted to state that our volunteer meeting was entirely commission-led, it wasn't led by the city at all, it was one hundred percent led by the commission, and the marketing report was also, I, I did that marketing report, it wasn't any of the city staff as well.
Thank you.
I did the budget only because I didn't involve in, uh, some, some background, just to get...
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I would just add that, uh, I think it's exciting that they're willing to take on the crab feed, but I really do have concerns about, um, the heading in a different direction from what we all decided we want the, wanted the parks commission to go, and so I agree, let's, let them take it on this year, but I would really like to note that they're focusing on, you know...
More activity on park, right?
Yeah.
Right, that's the whole goal, the whole, uh, parks.
Yeah.
Is there, um, shall we move forward, is there a motion to, um, reading ordinance number three five five dash twenty-five and ordinance amending ordinance number three four six dash twenty-four, updating section thirty-two point two zero, general powers and duties, specifically updating the scope of community event planning for the city of depot bay. Is there a motion to accept reading this, uh, ordinance? Oh, do that. So what does path the direction of the city council? Does that mean before they would come to say, oh, we're gonna do the salmon bake this year? Does it mean that at the direction of city council, we, we would have to give specific, um, permission for that to proceed? Absolutely, absolutely. Just like every other committee event that happens in the city of Wilsonville, they come before the city, researching for funds and, seeking out with all, with all of the, uh, events that go on here. But the events are supposed to serve the, um, residents.
Right.
Okay, back to a motion to read ordinance number three five five dash twenty-five for the second time by title only. Was that?
I think we are about to do the...
Wait, we need to read this.
This is the second task, I can read it. Remember, as long as everybody...
Sorry, let me see if I can move my phone forward, my phone.
So, I'll make that motion if this comes to the table.
Yeah, okay.
It's been moved to the second to read ordinance number three five five dash twenty-five by title only, is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Is there a motion to accept ordinance, uh, number three five five?
Pardon me, that would be adopt.
Adopt. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number three five five dash twenty-five as presented? I'll make that motion, I will second it. It's been moved to seconded to adopt, um, ordinance number three five five dash twenty-five, is there discussion on the motion? Kim, would you call the roll, please?
Councilor Beasley?
Aye.
Councilor Harmon?
Aye.
Councilor Poland?
Aye.
Councilor Wreck?
Yep.
Mayor Short?
Yes.
Councilor Sauer?
Aye.
Uh, Councilor Watson, sorry, she threw you off. Thank you.
No, she passed. Thank you, Kim. Okay, we're doing a crab feed.
Thank you.
Okay, guys, we're, we're coming now. We'll be calling you after we meet.
Um, in court, I just wanna clarify, the funding, um, because while it's also a community event, it's also a tourist event, so money can come out of our TRT, as you remember, we are supposed to be spending money on tourism, um, stuff. I can't think of the right word, so the funding can also come out of there.
Oh, okay, thank you, Kim.
And we have more than enough.
Um, I'm, I'm Rubison. Come on, I can do a lot of things.
That's what this is.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And welcome back, it's so good to see you again.
Thank you.
And thank you for stepping up to sort of, to that information at the end.
As a former member, do you have any updates or any discussion committee on that? As a former member, do you have any updates or any discussion committee want to promote for this evening?
I'll just briefly introduce myself to some fresh faces and some familiar faces and new chairs that I like seeing. My name is Von Ross, and I'm a fifth generation Oregon post-rede, third generation Depot Bay resident. Since that time, 1847, when my great-great-grandfather landed on these shores providing yourself, unique in the way in which we arrived on their ship instead of land, we've oriented ourselves towards the ocean and its resources, including crab and salmon. So deeply committed to our fisheries resources, so much so that I choose to pursue that as part of my profession. I'm an instructor in the Department of Fisheries, Wildlife and Conservation Sciences at Oregon State University. For some context, we are the first fully online fishing wildlife degree. We have 900 undergrads, 700 of them are entirely online. They get to learn from wherever they have an internet connection. I get to teach from wherever I have one, and I choose to do that in Depot Bay because I love it so much. So, yeah, as many of y'all know, salmon are just such a critical tie that binds us all together. It's one of the reasons that I have such a good relationship with Councilor Watson and one of the convicts for seeing Councilor Harmon so much. So, yeah, really near and dear to my heart, named after the guy who started the commission. My dad currently serves as the chair. And, yeah, that's how I connect salmon. Looking forward to continuing on some of the legacy programming and starting some new programming as well.
Wonderful. Any questions for Von this evening?
Come on, I came all the way here.
I know, I know.
Did you say you came all the way here?
I did, yeah, I crossed my line.
Do you think you'll have any issues attending the meetings?
I don't think so. I don't foresee any. And if there is any reason why I would be unable to attend in person, I do love that we have the option of Zoom meetings now. So that's something that I'm very familiar with.
Cool. Alrighty. Well, if there's no further questions, do you have a ballot to present?
Shouldn't that be a bin flip?
What was that?
Shouldn't that be a bin flip? By the way, I've also been informed that he has a, what kind of puppy?
A really cute one, generally good.
Oh, God, no, Tom is cute.
He knows that.
Oh, okay. And his name is Arlo.
His name is Arlo. The device, remembering what his name is, is the first time I got down to pet him. I was like, oh, we are low.
No, Ray.
Yes.
He says, don't tell me that.
That was cute.
Yep.
That's funny. Can I buy it? And what, Corgi, I was gonna say.
Corgi.
Yeah, I thought I heard grill. Who told you Corgi?
Corgi cattle.
Yeah. So he has to bring him to a pet pool.
Personally, growing a long life is not a high.
Oh. All in favor?
Okay.
Thanks, everyone. 42.
Okay, thank you.
Hold that one. It's been moved to the second to accept this plate of ballots. Is there a discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. 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 Any opposed? Welcome back.
Thanks, it's good to be back.
Yes, we're excited. Jack, did you have something?
No, I'm just standing up so he can get back.
Oh, oh, okay. Okay, limited seating back there. Joyce, would you want to come over?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead, just tell me.
No, all right.
That's good. Joyce is wanting to re-up with the emergency preparedness committee.
And I run it out, I printed it because no one can read my handwriting. So hopefully you were able to read this. I've been a member of the committee since its inception. And I'm passionate about it and think we're doing some good things and would like to be considered to be a new standard. Any questions?
Yeah.
Any questions for Joyce? I would just like to say thank you so much for all of your work.
Thank you.
Yeah, excited to have you.
I appreciate that.
And what, someone has a passion for it, that's not me.
You put clicks on it.
Yeah.
Well, one thing that may be helpful to our new members and everyone, I just did a recap of what we've been accomplishing and a few things that we're working on, and I thought that might be helpful.
Sure.
You know, for you, especially new members, you might be familiar with what we do.
Okay.
We have a lot, too, I don't know.
You'll just provide it, right?
Actually, I'll do that.
So you have something for them?
I have.
Okay.
Could I also get one?
Of course. Oh.
For sure.
I know I did it. Sure.
Thank you.
You think finished? Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce, and thank you for stepping up again. Are there any other questions for Joyce? Shall we go ahead and fill out our ballots?
Wow, we did really tie it up.
Yes, thank you.
I mean, it was perfect, so.
I don't see Cindy here, so I'm assuming that she will. A person. Megan.
Good work.
Yes, thank you.
One thing to you guys, I've been in our department hoping about the GMA is where we go on all of our community members' taverns to visit most. And we have radio packs a couple times a month. And all of our community members have purchased their own radio. We're just basically native just for the need and we'll know how to use them. Just that I just want to show you what they look like.
All in favor? Head it. It's been moved to the second to accept the ballots as presented. Is there a discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm on the target.
We have a, gosh. Is this the community? I get everything, the dock replacement project, with kind of some change orders and, you know, really, we're getting so far into the project, these are like nominal. Do you want to bring us up to date on that, Kim?
I asked he indeed to write it down. He was trying to explain to me why we needed these. And Brady can probably speak a little bit more because I think you've actually seen the ends of the ganways.
Yeah.
As expected and anticipated to some extent, wear and tear. So this is why they're doing that. When I originally approved it, I thought it was for three of them, but it turns out it was only one. So as soon as they told me they would need more plus than another one, I was like, we're going to the cats, well, this is too many to increase the project without having to pass review. But the memo explains why they're doing these.
Does everyone have a chance to read that?
Yeah, it was very explicit.
When I was, I read it.
Yeah.
Wasn't exactly sure without a diagram. It's just the rollers ready at the top.
Yeah, the roller, yeah, some of them are damaged, they're using.
So it's the rollers that attach the dock?
Yeah, that kind of, they're kind of a head, but they call them rollers. But it's similar to a head.
So they're, so it's three of them that, one was, okay.
Yeah, some of them are compromised, some of them are really cracked and couldn't fail.
And I apologize, Juan did send me some pictures at one point. I do have those pictures and I should have included them. I can also send them to you afterwards.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, we can get them anyway.
I didn't even think about that.
Well, one is gonna be, is in good enough shape to be kept as a square.
Yeah, yeah. And we'll store that just as an X-ray, which is good because it gets us somewhere done and see if it goes fail or install.
So each is about $2,600, is that right? At times three, okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, let's see, two. Let me go see what's in the most say. Yeah, the change order was, that was just electrical pedals because that was $2,500. Each of one, the next two, two A and two B are just almost $8,800 piece.
So why are they so much more than the $3,000, $2,500?
The $3,000 was for the pedestals, electric pedestals only.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that was a different thing. That was just because, I forget why they had to do that now, that they had to do some work. They had to change out, oh, P E parts, they had to do some change.
So two of the roller things are like $8,800 and one is almost $1,000?
Um, change order three concerns the addition of improved gangway landing runners on new docks three and four to provide a surface for the ganways. So it's not just the rollers, it's the actual surface on the landing runners, which is speaking docks and I'm not quite sure exactly. I do know what they were showing now, or do you what? They need the lip to the, the lip, the ganway, right?
Yeah, there's a plate at the bottom.
That's it, plate.
I can put it in simple terms. Basically, it's what calls the gangway up, people walk down to the dock.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So as they stay here, the damage is substantial to the point of disaster. Without repair, it could be detrimental to the functions they get harbor, including coastal failure and collapse. Meaning that these have been there for.
Long time, very long time.
Yeah.
We need to get them.
Lots of them, yeah, we put it in the mid 90s.
Yeah, as most big construction projects, there's always financial expenses along. And I don't think anybody wants to see anybody seeing way collapsed into the harbor.
No, it's nice to understand.
Yeah, but it's good. So that, this part is what it sits on. When it goes up and down with the tide, that's why it sits on top of it.
So two are just the rollers at the top and one is that?
That's the name of it.
Yeah, that's the bottom. And when there's really high tides too, they tend to do reverse. The, yeah, the dock was higher than the part of the dock. So that plate up here, normally we have to go down there and barreling the place, and it's kind of dangerous, so this will prevent that.
Next, I have a hub and give me drawings.
Jack, did you have something to put on that?
Yeah, this also precludes the dock surface from being damaged.
Oh, correct, yes. Good point. Is there a motion to accept change order two A and two B as presented?
N three.
Oh, N three.
And we want to accept chamber two and three.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? It's been moved to the second to accept the change orders as presented. Is there a discussion on the motion? No. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. We've got a tourism proposal. Kim, did you want to bring us up to date on that?
Yes, Councilor Musella, and I think this is a similar. He asked me about this and reminded me that I had said, we had talked about that, remember? When we're talking about when the chamber kind of started to go down, we said we really needed some kind of an organization to kind of handle this tourism marketing promotion. That's not my strength. I really have no interest in doing it, nor do I have time to do it. So the idea was to come up with a proposed RFP and I had given you a sample, but not one for us. So I took the various different samples I found, and this was actually one that was from the city of Newport. And I made the fixes where I realized I put Newport and I liked some language from Iskwa, so I fixed all that already. But I had just liked the, especially the Newport, they did this back in 2023. So I really liked theirs and what they were looking for as far as their goals and objectives. So I thought.
Please, those are pretty good for us.
There was one place that still has a city of Newport. Yes, I can fix both of those. I fixed one place where it said Newport and one place where it said Iskwa.
But it's still in what's in our cavity. You fixed it.
Yes, I fixed it on my Word document. My apologies.
So open the floor for discussion.
I didn't know if anybody had any thoughts about something else they would like added, something they didn't think we should care about, or, you know, things like that. I mean, the idea is that I also put the budget in there, which is that the $50,000, which is what we budgeted for tourism marketing promotion, I should actually reduce that because we are going to use, remember for the KET program? So I will reduce that because we are going to use that funding to pay for that. So still reducing it even by the $40,000, so it hasn't been pretty hefty.
That's for the next six months.
Next six months. And then I asked them to put their proposal to look at for the next budget year, seeing if they're going to be able to be keeping their information the same so that we can make some kind of a call or decision. Or at least if you approve the agreement, we can say, okay, we'll make sure we budget this for.
Who's there?
Anyone who hires our contractors.
Whomever applies for this.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. And I'm gonna, I have some individuals, there's also some firms. So there's, so I'm gonna send it pretty widely. I think we'll get some good nibbles on this.
So the previous meeting we talked about the K2 proposal, and then now we're talking about the managing tourism marketing. So the budget, like, we didn't, I guess, where's, where's the crossover there? So are we doing our own promoting, or are we hiring somebody?
Uh, yes.
That's what this was for. So the previous meeting, all of that is.
I was actually, if we brought them on in time to put something together with KETU and say, here, you do it. Get to them. Otherwise, we'll work on something together, but I really would like to really have somebody who plays people to talk to something. I don't want to do any good tourism marketing, that's why we're, and we need it, that's why we're.
Right.
We're talking to them.
No, I understand.
So if we take that one.
So basically, this is a further advanced version of what we talked about.
Right. So we might have to roll out the March one because we got that coming up fairly soon. But the idea is that they would take whatever other stuff they can plus the next two.
Rain, did you have a question?
Yeah, we talked, or I talked last time, and there wasn't any pushback about how much support there was, to try to get something about sustainable tourism in there in collaboration with the, uh, I'm sorry, what's that, marketing? Sorry, I mentioned less, I can't think of. AHA? And so I'm thinking under integrated marketing, which says, establish increased Depot Bay brand awareness, reinforce the brand, inspire visitation to Depot Bay, grow Depot Bay's marketing region hardship. We could put inspire a sustainable visitation, visitation to Depot Bay. Not, um, deliver visitor, visitor studio.
I'm sorry, what is sustainable?
I was gonna ask that too.
Well, you know, it's trying to make sure that people are cognizant of their impact when they're, when they're traveling. There's a whole promotion of trying to protect birds and protect whales and nails.
Don't leave trash behind.
And rocky shores, about not stepping on, you know, on sensitive tidal creatures. There's a whole marketing for ARBAN AHA.
ARBAN.
Postal Visitors Association that tries to promote that. So I'm not saying we develop something new, but just have this somehow. Maybe we can just have a separate bullet so that they coordinate with AHA to try to promote sustainable tourism. And then just a big board.
I can read you a quick definition, if that will help.
Yes.
Sustainable tourism is a concept that considers the economic, social, environmental impacts of tourism. It aims to improve the experience of tourists while also addressing the needs of the environment and local communities.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, the benefits of it are, the reasons why people come to Depot Bay are the things that you want to protect.
Right.
Protect the whales.
Yeah.
Right.
Check their cigarette.
Yeah.
That too, yeah.
Um, if the council's congruence on happy, my apologies, counselor, I did not do that on purpose. I will, if the council was agree about, I'll add something on that.
That sounds good.
Okay.
And then.
Oh, did you come with?
I did, but um I can.
Oh, um, who, who would this group or this person report to?
Counsel.
Counsel in general?
Well, they would like all consultants work with me, but if the council wants a monthly report, quarterly report.
Kind of just a.
Biweekly report, whatever the council wants. They would tell us how they do reporting and then you would say, well, they said they'll report once a quarter, but I really want once a month. And you guys can tell me that's what you want.
And and the direction you would be here then.
Would be what you guys tell me you want us to be. Meaning that we know we have to force focus on tourism, but what's that going to look like? They might propose something like, for example, I've had that person talk to me about billboards. And I was like, oh my God, no billboards in this city. But what she meant was like a billboard in Portland saying come to Depot Bay. Those are the types of things that you guys would decide if that's what we want our vision to be. It's really about what we want our vision to be and and they'll probably want me to do guys that'll grab that. I see a work session in.
One of the other things that I saw in here and that's your page I was looking at. But they talked about um using the um city of Depot Bay's social marketing. To me, it has to be separate from the city of Depot Bay's Facebook page. Um, I don't want the city of Depot Bay's Facebook page be taken over by the marketing association. So they can point to the city of Depot, see what's going on in the city of Depot Bay. But I, it it implied to me that it was more than the same and I was.
It, you're correct. It's not supposed to be.
Um, yeah, I don't remember that where that wording was.
I I know where it's at. I'll fix it.
Okay.
Um, so the idea is that they can use our platform, our website platform to create a page just for tourism, like like say, for example, Explore Lincoln City Desk. Or they can create a brand new website. You guys will help. What's their proposal? Will tell us kind of what they think they can do for us, especially in the first year. I mean, I would love to see a beautiful Explore Lincoln City yahahs, all these pages for Depot Bay. But this might not come from our website and I get what you're saying and I'll make sure that um maybe establish and maintain, that would be a good word.
Okay. And I I like what Valerie said about having them in their proposal outline a uh a summary of activities, you know, you know, of how regularly they report.
Oh, yeah. Like um maybe like the monthly paying commission when they're, when, I don't know if we need it monthly, but maybe, yeah.
Okay. My monthly recording.
Maybe monthly at first.
Yeah, 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 just to get us going.
Or have them suggest a report.
Okay.
Schedule, yeah. Okay.
Okay, I remember that then. I do want to say I don't want to promote billboards anywhere.
I don't like.
Care of their port.
Yeah, I don't.
For Depot Bay. I think we, we don't want to promote them.
Okay.
Okay, is there a motion to accept the R S P as uh what the change is suggested?
Um, one other question, I'm sorry, is there, I don't mean to dominate, somebody else had questions? Um, this um general city reservation, is that where we said um it's, we have it for two years and then we could extend it?
Mm-hmm.
Um and um there was something about uh at the same price or something like that?
It's asking if they would be, that was like, for example, Newport did that. I've seen that being done before where you could say, would you want after two years, kind of increase, would you be looking for? Would you be looking at at ten percent C P I? What would you want to do? So it's under contract term.
Well, there it is, terms. Shall we, are we really willing to at first have them for three years or should we do that for two years? With an option to extend it for two additional?
This is kind of new to us. Well, and that's the, that's the key point. Um, marketing and promotion takes time for the fall to start holding. So two years would be the bare minimum, I'd say, if you really want to do that. But we'll have language in there that with a thirty days notice, we can terminate the contract at any time.
Okay, I I don't see that though.
Well, you won't hear, but you'll see it in the actual agreement.
Right.
I have a draft agreement here.
Okay.
Yeah. There's always language in there that if, you know, they're still giving, it gives you an app. What this does is it makes it more um potential interesting to people that are on it, but it doesn't by any means lock us into this because the contract rules over this.
Yeah, I see that you have a G and it's it before termination, so that's good. But not the terms, it just says any contract award may be terminated by the city with or without cost, a bundle of things.
Mm-hmm.
So that's good. Okay, thank you.
I really think we should keep the three years and with the option to be able to kind of decide, you need time to for somebody to develop and then we'll work on it.
I'm sorry, we had a discussion now as a motion.
Not yet. But I'll accept a motion. Is there a motion to accept the R S P as presented with changes as noted?
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved. Uh, is there a second?
I'm second.
It's been moved to a second to accept the R S P as presented. Is there a discussion on the motion?
Discussion.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. And uh Kim, thank you for going to Newport and and uh pilfering their information. I uh, they're a pretty good organization in there. And I think that I'm all for that economize, maximize, plagiarize, I say, that'll get us through, so good job on that. Mayor, I have to tell you that I am not for this. I think it's too soon. I really like this presentation. I think it's got some uh, it's got some, you know, good stuff in it. I'd love to be able to sit down and think about it with some like-minded people. I think we could uh, I think it would be a fun exercise. But I don't think that we need tourism marketing right now. I think that we don't have a tourism problem. I talked to the uh, some of the the people who are are uh in the overnight business and even at this time of year, they're running seventy, seventy to one hundred percent occupancy. Uh, in the middle of winter, our our streets are so crowded. I know that you've been out and about the last couple of weekends. Uh, those keen tides really brought people over. Uh, and we've just been having a boom year. The main drivers of tourism for Depot Bay are hard at work bringing people in here. We've got, you know, this, this counselor mentioned all these essential elements. Plus, we have these advertising programs very ongoing by by uh B and Bs and the lodging companies and the restaurants and so on. So I don't think that we're under any pressure at all to uh, to go out and start marketing our town right now. Uh, it's a good idea, I but I think that we have other priorities that we've got to look at. Along this vein right here, I would rather see us do our T R T enforcement, for example. If we're gonna get into this area, uh, uh, I I would rather get into that. Uh we get no money from day trippers or people that are not overnighters. All we get is that additional pressure uh that costs us. And I I'm not interested in bringing that in. I don't think anybody uh here is interested in that. This is going to be a very busy project. It's going to take a lot of Kim's time. She said, all consultants work with me. And this is very intense work. Uh, I mean, this uh prospectus calls for uh creation of original content or creation of a new logo. Uh, I mean, there's, there's just a, I've I've seen these committees at work and these organizations at work. And it's uh, it's gonna, it it's just something I don't think we need to be involved in right now. We've got more important things to do. Fish to fry, I guess.
Yeah. And I totally disagree that we need to spend those T R T dollars to bring in tourism because we are woefully inadequate in doing that. And that is the way we can do that is having a D M O on on uh budget and going forward with promoting our city the way we should be with our T R T bills.
It's a state statute that requires us to spend money on tourism marketing promotion annually.
That's.
Not because we don't think we need it. We all know Depot Bay is amazing and people come here and grow those. But we still, all cities up and down the coast of any kind of tourism area that take T R T dollars are required by state statutes to spend money on this. And we have not really done that, not to any kind of degree that we should be.
Shall we make part of, make it require for their proposals to um come up with ways to encourage people to stay overnight?
Absolutely. I think I also talked about the shoulder season as well, which is, as we know, it's kind of out, although despite this beautiful weather. Um, I see people around town, night hours are booked and so, so yes, it's it's in there for them to figure out how they can do this space. And when it comes time to the work session with whoever is selected, that'd be something you could say, look, these are our marketing goals. We want to encourage heads and beds. I put that on there. But if I didn't, I would.
That was for the radio one.
Yeah, okay. I'll make sure it's a heads and beds language, type languages in this as well.
Is there also um these companies that do these things, they're really familiar with the process, but they might put a main person on this project that's never stayed here in Depot Bay a night. Would that be a requirement that they actually see some of these things?
We could try, but they don't have to see it to sell it.
Okay. I'm just curious.
Great salesmen and marketers, they.
They don't need it.
You know, that's like, you know, you ever see salesmen where they can say, I can, it's selling a roller van, you know, they're, if they can sell something, they can sell something.
Yeah.
So you just really want somebody who's really good at selling something. Somebody over there who has a background in this could tell you that.
I have a question on the uh source cleansing budget. Um, it says fifty thousand here. Do you envision that that is to pay the people and the talent along with the space and the airtime and everything else that you're buying?
No, this is just for the work.
This is just for the work.
Yeah, this is.
Should they analyze themselves, what cost for the two thousand dollars a month of work or whatever you buy?
Right. Right, so. They, they need to say that forty thousand, we're gonna change it to forty thousand for the K T U. Kind of let them know we have that K T U in there.
Oh, okay.
They have to come up with something that a marketing promotion strategy for us is gonna fit within that forty thousand. That doesn't include their.
So the the media buys themselves, where does that come out of?
The what?
The media buys, where you buy the newspaper space or the billboard or the television or the radio or whatever you end up doing.
That's gonna come, well, we can do it separate, but we can also do, because they say this needs to include.
Is that a separate? If I was. If I was gonna respond to this, I would want to know what your overall budget is.
I would tell them our overall budget is forty thousand for this, that's six months.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor.
And I'll put in there that includes, what do you call it, the media buys? Okay, I'll put in there that includes the media buys. Like I said, you're speaking a foreign language to me on that. And.
Why don't we ask this, instead of including media budget, why don't we ask them to do media for free?
Yeah.
You know, the the social media, news releases.
There's a lot to talk about.
Well, they're gonna put together a proposal for us to handle our tourism marketing. They get to decide what that proposal looks like.
Sure. Do you know what you're buying?
You, exactly. You guys get to decide whether or not
Your social media. Right.
this meets what you want. I mean, they have to put together a proposal. The best ones would be brought to you. You guys decide what you think you'd like.
I feel like since we need to spend the money, why don't we see who volunteers to try and do this for us and we can all decide if it's something that works for the city.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
I mean, if we, if we have to spend the money, then let's see what's out there. We may not like anybody that responds to this proposal and then we can decide on it later.
Mm-hmm.
But these are all details that we're talking about, but we we don't know who's gonna respond or what they're gonna offer and we can say no to any of them. Or we might debate between three of them, if we don't know.
Pardon me, and I did put in there that we would be evaluating based on where did you see on the, based on location? Like if we get somebody that is in Maine who wants to be our person and we have somebody from Portland, who would you pick?
Portland.
So we're gonna have, we're gonna give you a grain of baseball. I forgot.
That's the smell of the bacon.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is is there um legally any other way to use these tourism marketing money um in a more creative way that you might like there, like, you know, these banners or these you know, something that we don't necessarily need to make this experience for tourists who are here better, or they can stay longer, but not necessarily as a marketing thing to bring more in. I think we're not maybe, well, I'm speaking for myself. I think we have enough tourists. We just don't have tourists that add value to the cities if they're not staying. So what, could we do something more creative like um dark sky promotion? Or promotion of uh wave watching with how.
Who would do all of this?
They could do that, but not through the typical um marketing that we're thinking tourism marketing and promotion, right? Um, we could ask them to focus their activities on tourism and marketing um within the city to try to get people to stay long.
Sure.
And first again.
Rather be against somebody.
Yeah, but if we don't ask them to what to focus on, um we have to spend money on tourism marketing promotion, means bringing people to the city. Regardless of what they do when we get here, they have to, we have to encourage them to come. Dark skies may help, but it won't necessarily encourage them to come. Um, it might be benefit. Now, whale watching helps, sport fishing helps, way, you know, the seawall helps, downtown stores help. We have to encourage them to come to, that's what that state statute requires, to encourage them to come. So may, I don't know if there's any creative ways, we can see what their proposal comes up with.
Right, see what they propose and then we could go from there.
But if we don't ask, why would they be creative? They just do what they always do.
I would put in there that they can uh see if they can come up with uh creative ways to bring people in Depot Bay. We can't say we have enough tourists. We don't. We have to have tourists, that is number one of our names versus the main of the T R T, people spending the night.
Yeah.
We need to bring them here to have them do that. They come here for the day, they go, I'm coming here. It's how I did it. I came here for a day, spent some trips over here on the, at night, not stayed in short term.
Yeah, I think it's really important that we figure out how to gain some income from the day trippers, that all those thousands of people that stand by the seawall. I mean, can we put a G?
Charge parking.
Charge for parking.
How much will they earn?
Can we charge for each spot on the seawall?
But you know, they have to, it's to, the T R T money comes from overnight stuff, so you don't want just a bunch more people coming standing by the seawall. You want people to spend nights. And then in that case, you could do like a co-op program where you have an ad main theme and then all of your individual, you know, exactly. B and Bs can have their own little spot.
Yeah.
So lots of creative.
I remember, he also had a work session about revenue opportunities.
I know, we need to move on that.
Now, that wasn't one of the particular ones that was put ahead of time.
Okay, let's move forward and remember.
We have a motion to.
Yes, we do.
Oh, oh. I just wanted to say that I um agree that the money that the city that can see is from the T R T funds. But what the city doesn't see is that day trippers still contribute to the city. When they come here and even if they spend a couple of hours here, a discipline, they're not gonna come back. The more people that we bring here, the more word of mouth, the more it is now to bring more people to spend a night here. If they're coming here and spending money at our businesses, our businesses are contributing to the city and there are ways that they contribute. But specifically going completely narrow-minded saying that we need to make marketing just for heads and beds, that's not, it's too narrow of a focus.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because.
No, but it should be included.
It should be included, but it's too narrow of a focus because people can come here for a couple of hours and then go home and be like, hey, guys, I just went to this really cool place, let's go spend the weekend there.
Yeah.
You know, if we don't get people here, they're not gonna know about it.
Yeah.
And we can't just focus on funding from just the T R T clubs. And we can't just focus on funding from just the TRT funds. For any people here who support them.
Let's move forward with the motion before us to accept this RFP two four D O, oh, probably second. Okay, is there uh any further discussion on the motion? Kim, would you call the roll?
This is just a motion.
Oh.
Yeah, you, you still wanna call the roll, I mean, I can, but it's just, okay, it's not an ordinance.
Oh. Okay, I'm sorry, then all papers say aye. Aye, aye, any opposed? Okay, so we'll go forward with that and see what we get. And uh I'm, I'm sure some folks are gonna agree with you. Um we've got an office remodel proposal before us, and why is it needed, so. Uh is there any discussion on this proposal, this capital improvement to make our office uh much more inhabitable? I'm surprised Tim's coming back after his last experience here doing this office.
Uh, from what everybody's told me, I was surprised too, but uh he's willing to come back, so.
And that's all within our budget?
Oh yeah, that's part of the, the office administration.
Yeah.
We've been chipping away at this, we're not anywhere gonna spend the full amount, it's simply because of all the things that are priority-wise. The office needs to be redone, but it's just, we're getting other stuff done.
Are we on his list?
Yeah, oh, we're on a good list now, right, are we, Tim's just now?
Yeah, we are, yeah.
So Mayor, if we did this right away, we'd be able to have confusion all the way from Collins Street to here.
Oh, good idea.
How much add to the confusion? Would you be doing this on the weekend or like?
We can certainly make it so, or Fridays we're not here, so the offices closed anywhere, staff can work, still work, but work from home, because I also have to be able to do that.
Okay.
And a lot of them like to do their minutes during, when they're at home, you know, the DJs.
Yeah. And it doesn't look like we would take that, is that that one also?
No, no, it did, no.
Continue.
Is, is there a motion to accept the um proposal from Tim Fender for eleven thousand five hundred and forty dollars to. Some improvements to our af- office there?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
So I moved to the second to accept the estimate from Fender and company, is there discussion on the motion? All papers say aye, 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 any opposed?
Aye.
I'm reading.
Tell him thanks for work of ours.
Yes.
He'll put a special place for his tools this time.
Yeah.
Are you, are you left far?
Kim, do you wanna bring us up to date on this survey on this League of Organized Cities, it's uh pretty much what we developed in our little work session we got the weeks ago.
So, I just wanna make sure that, I want you guys to know, I'm not trying to step on the city council's toes at all. My goal with this was the city council, I gave you guys a copy of the strategic plan, and we're trying to say. How is staff going to accomplish the things that are in the council's strategic plan? So, this Karagiya group, I did not anticipate that they wouldn't want to do a survey, but I recognize the survey is. We, I don't know when the last time the city, our residents and community happened to survey, to find out how they think about anything. Um and we see what's on Facebook and we know what people say, but. It'd be nice to know what's on our residents and our business community, our HOAs, everybody's mind. What is the top things that are, what do they think makes Deepo Bay very special? This isn't what I expected, um I expected to be able to figure out how I can get the projects done. So, but I think this might help when we're looking at prioritizing the projects from the strategic plan. I can say that the council, look, you know, people, they really think good water is number one, so we need to focus on that, what that looks like, here's the items under good water. That's what I'm hoping to come out of this.
Eva, did you have a question?
Uh no, I actually read through the strategic plan, I, it's, it's very interesting, I like that the survey's one page, and I think it's a good idea to send it out to all Deepo Bay residents. I think the questions need to be a little bit reformed, or, I mean, not the questions, but the responses, so the first one is three words to describe a community. I, I'm sorry, but if I got the survey, I could not describe the community in three words. Describe what you want best out of this community in a sentence or two.
Okay.
Leave this number two, number three. Between talking about the community's greatest assets and the three most pressing challenges, I don't think giving them these options is the right idea. Say list three, list three that belong to you, because to be honest, if I got this survey in the mail, I probably would not fill it out.
Is this because you want more open-ended?
Yeah, I think that by, it's kinda like when you're in school, right, you get a multiple choice question, you have to pick one. Just leave it open, so that.
Okay.
Say, what are the community's greatest assets today, that's a great question, but instead of pick three, list three. And that way it gets them to think about it and be more engaged, instead of, okay, do I select one, five and eight, or, there's always the other comment box, but no one ever fills it out. Um same thing, number three, that's a good question to ask, but again, these, we're giving them answers instead of letting people pick their answers. And I think that would be a more accurate way of doing a, doing a community survey.
Okay.
Um and then number four, rank order of urgency of these priority areas. Most of them are decent, but again, it leaves no room for anybody to come up with their own options. Um I mean, they're all pretty broad, and so, I mean, it's like infrastructure, o- okay, well, that, that can be a lot of things. I mean, somebody could read that, slap infrastructure, but really they're talking about, you know, the Ram Bay Street, but not Deepo Bay as a whole. Um I think by giving these really broad categories, it doesn't give us a good idea of what people actually want. Instead, make, make them do the work, make them pick, okay, what three things are most important to me in this city. And then let them write it, and then they can write in three words or in three sentences, but you know, I think. Giving people multiple choices limits anybody's ability to think about what actually matters to them, they'll just be like, oh, I got a piece of mail, I'm gonna fill it out, and I'm gonna send it back, but I actually can't think about it.
Right, could I ask for a clarification question a moment? Um so, because there's people who don't mind multiple choice, and I'm one of them.
I, I get that.
So my question would be, maybe what we could do is say, here are. Top ten.
Yeah.
What's yours, if, if you don't wanna pick these, what's your to- what's your top five, what's your top three?
Right.
So they can choose to use the multiple choice, or they can write their own.
I mean, that's an option again.
I, I have to run it by the strategic plan, folks that are helping with this, because they have the wrong vision, and I gotta say, well, look, I talked to my group, and this is kinda what we were thinking, so.
Right. Like listing these nine things that the citizens of Deepo Bay might be unhappy with, um tells the citizens of Deepo Bay that the city of Deepo Bay thinks that these are the three most pressing challenges.
Got you.
I got you. I think three out of four people are gonna think more involved written answers are too much work, and we just won't give the surveys back.
Well, I think.
People that wanna say something are gonna write it on the slides under the.
Well, I. And you want us to write as paragraphs, it's list two to three word descriptions, but if you give them these nine things that, to be perfectly honest, none of them or almost none of them are relevant to me.
Yeah. Yeah.
I received the survey at home, because that's how I think about it. Um I would cross that out and write my own thing, but I think that people, you, you could put a couple of examples.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but.
Okay.
Make, you know, saying, pick three of these, it's kinda like, well, what if you don't wanna pick three, then you just don't pick any, and you're gonna end up with a bunch of blank surveys. Um the last question is also confusing to me personally, because it says please indicate your primary relationships like one. Resident, city employee, elected official, commission or committee volunteer, business community member, community-based organization. I fall under three of those, so I'm not entirely sure between the two.
I can, we can change it. Um just say you have a primary, so uh or simply say, are you a resident, business owner? What's your primary?
Well, you could be a business owner, a resident, and a elected.
Absolutely, but what's your primary focus as Eva Harmon?
Uh I don't think that I could limit it to those three categories.
So, um, yes, um. I think it's more likely that the people will want to do a um multiple choice. Um we can encourage them, you know, to uh or add your own. Um but the League of Oregon Cities, which has helped all these communities. Um put together strategic um.
Survey.
Uh su- surveys suggest this.
Mm-hmm.
And they've gotten really good responses, like seventy percent, you know, or something was said in that. So, um. And again, this was supposed to tee off our existing strategic plan and help figure out what, you know, your priorities. What, what should the city staff be working on first? So it's not like we're doing a new strategic plan, so.
I just feel like there are, they don't retain their responses to lots of old, they shouldn't be there, they shouldn't have. But I mean, I think examples are good, it forces them to choose three of these specific things, they can sort of give their tailor in the answers to what we hold supporting. But that's what.
I think we have to go with the League of Organized Cities and what they've had.
Well, I would like to take Council Harmon's feedback.
Okay.
And see if maybe with their experience, they have another way we can do this that narrows the multiple choice options with the given more free rate of the people.
Oregon people.
Does that sound okay? Cause I, I mean, they may have like, oh yeah, we've done this before, I mean, that's. So, I'd like to be worth it.
Asking.
Huh?
It's worth asking?
It's worth asking, um.
And there may be a deadline on this.
Which are just like, you know, either do this or add your own, you know?
Right, um there is a deadline on this, um. Meaning they wanted to kinda get some review and blessing going forward, but I'm sure that if we can have them come up with an alternative that narrows both, we can make that work. I just was looking for your feedback, there's nothing to approve, there's nothing to, I'm looking for your feedback, and I would like to take your feedback to the Karagiya group and ask them, based on your experience, how can we make this work? For those who want multiple choice, and those who want more free rate.
Or maybe just cha- I mean, change your multiple choice options, it says, what are your community's greatest assets? Harbor, seawall, whales, and scenic view, I mean, I could argue that the seawall and the whales and the scenic view are kind of the same thing.
I see what you're saying.
But that's three out of eight of the options. And you're supposed to pick every.
Okay.
So maybe more specific assets of our community that could be armed, whales, which aren't actually ours, and just pass them.
Well, it's a coastline.
They are too large. And the scenic views. Don't tell me that.
We're lucky to have, but um.
Why isn't the coastline on there?
You know, there's.
That's the biggest asset.
There's, I don't know, I feel like it's very broad.
I'm with you, I, I, Council Harmon, I promise you, I've already been trying.
Okay.
Um I may ask you for clarification if you don't mind, um but uh yes, I'm, I, I get where you're going.
Please, I'm a forwardy suggestions besides whales, seawall and redundancy.
Okay.
That would be perfect.
Mayor Pan?
Yes.
I'd like to ask everybody here to think about a different way on this, which is not to do a survey right now. Uh I'm not anti-survey, it would be nice to find out, you know, what people think, that would be nice, I guess. But uh. I, to me, it's busy work. Do we really need a survey right now, I was looking at the twenty twenty-two survey, I remember covering it when the council sat down to develop it, and I looked at it again, I think. Kim, you sent it out in the packet, I pulled out my three-ring binder and I went through it. That twenty twenty-two uh uh strategic plan was, I thought, just absolutely fantastic. I think it was put, a lot of it was done with, or some of it was done with the LOC also. So it has the impromptu of, of, you know, being a, a really official document. We need to follow up on that, to review that, and make sure that we are following up those things about our finances, and our, and our public safety. And our emergency preparedness, all the things that were in there. As far as this goes, this just looks to me to be another thing that we're gonna add on Kim's desk already tonight, we've approved the craft feed, we've approved the marketing organization. And now we're gonna throw a, a survey on her desk, how much more work can she do? When we've already got all of this stuff to do.
I don't know, I mean, as a resident that's lived here since two thousand six, I've never filled out a survey, and I really like this, I thought, I can't wait to fill this out.
And as part of the um. How many weeks of ongoing work is, are we working with, with this group?
Four months.
Four months.
But that's it.
Right, and part of the survey. Three, maybe four months, was their initial, let's see what your residents want. And I think it's brilliant, because we're going into budget season, and we've got to have some ideas on. How, what folks are thinking this year.
It'll help you prioritize the things that we should be focusing on exactly.
Yeah.
Now, I'm looking at the twenty twenty-two's, twenty twenty-one, and they, they didn't ask residents. Uh all they talked to was the council, city staff, and committees of commissions.
This is a much broader.
You did that to help the community, right?
Yeah, right, yeah. So this would be much more detailed than, lots more things that.
That's a great idea.
I do too, I do too. I think I'm concurring that we need to go forward with this and, and kind of work.
Um after I talk to Karagiya about Council Harmon's ideas.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, has everyone had a chance to look at our staff updates and what's going on in this town besides ripping up all the streets?
I have a few things to update you on.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Um first of all, the uh Mayor Short had asked for a report regarding the harbor docks.
Oh, yeah.
Expenses. So that is what that document was that I sent out today, and I will be happy, maybe, happy, to let you know. That we have, of the three revenue sources, or we, others are more than three, but the three main revenue sources, we've expended all but one. The only one we haven't expended yet was the five point, one point five million that we got from the lottery fines, um. Last, well, that enabled us to go, but we expended both the grants, I submitted on the report, so both those grants. So, um things have been right along on the harbor, we're gonna get, if you ever are looking to see what's going on, besides going in there. Go to the website, there's all these observation reports that P and D, the engineers that were hired to manage this project for us. They're doing a great job of managing the project. Um this sheet that I put together said kind of a ballpark of where we might end up having to pay out of the urban renewal funds. And mind you, that's without any other chain orders, and that's without knowing exactly once the construction management part is done by P and D, what that will end up being. It's been running around ten thousand a month, so I just took it out. To the end of the time on that. We are reaching out to them, they're getting really close to substantial completion. Boat owners are very anxious to get back into the harbor. Um we are reaching out to find out when we might be able to start having those discussions and get the slips signed, and we've talked about it. So, uh so that's going really well there, the other thing I wanted to let you know is I meant to give you a copy. Um you can tell me right now if you want it printed or if you want emailed, but the evacuation plan for Deepo Bay is in, it's done. Um I'm gonna give it to the emergency preparedness committee, but I wanted to see how you guys wanted it, did you want me to email it to you, do you want a copy of it, what would you, a printed copy of it?
How long is it?
I don't know, maybe fifty pages, maybe.
Email.
Email.
Just email, okay. Um let's see, uh.
Other maps?
Not the way that we think there's gonna be.
Okay.
Just.
Well, we can only.
You can always ask me for a printed copy if you decide you want one.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um. I got notified from council governments today, who handles or are moving into handling on IT. They applied for, for work for us as part of what they're doing, um a cybersecurity-type grant and a domain-moving mitigation grant. We got them. Um the cybersecurity grant is like forty-seven hundred dollars, and the domain moving to help with that offset those costs that we'd already budgeted for is twenty-four hundred dollars. So, we've got money coming in from them to help us with that transfer we were gonna pay for anyway, so that will reduce our budget on that. Let's see. Things, that's the main stuff, um. Sorry, um we uh. We have learned a very hard lesson. Uh and Pat, I have indicated tourist city engineer, this will never happen again. We have two projects going on at the same. Where we have two projects going on at the same time, and not only going on at the same time, on two main avenues. So we thought that the contractor would be able, not be able to get on Collins as fast as he did, so. Um, so yes, uh, that, uh, that was poor planning on everyone's parts, and that won't happen again. Um, it's driving you guys crazy, isn't it?
It'll all be done by spring break.
Oh, it definitely will be done by spring break. Um, I just would like feedback about A Street. How are things looking? Don't, don't talk to me about the narrow street because that's within our code and that's within, you know, the parameters of what our master planning transportation is that. I just wanna know what you think about the sidewalk, I see people using it, what about the?
I think the sidewalks are beautiful.
The black vinyl fence, I, I actually, when it first went up, I was like. So they couldn't put wood, I don't know if you noticed, one of the things somebody had asked about putting wood, you know? But they had to mount the fence to concrete, otherwise people wouldn't be adding over the edge and they said that could've, cause they had to put concrete in the ground, so they just said that the black vinyl fencing was safer. So um, it's not great, but we, we have other chain of fencing around here, unfortunately, so, um.
I think it looks great.
It looks wonderful.
If it's wider on the south, I mean, on the north side, they're gonna widen the asphalt a little, so it won't be so narrow.
Yeah.
Okay, so if you look at a plan to help the county thing, it certainly looks like our street goes through a lot of the thirteen-hundred, like, it's amazing. Yeah, I, I was assuming that everything was surveyed before this started.
Yes.
Okay, cause it really looks like the street and the passwalk goes over this lot, right?
It's like, yeah, but if you look at the right way, the road goes right up to the farmhouse.
Right.
Yeah.
Like into his house, so they made an adjustment two years ago.
Our rightways encroach other rightways and roads, or noted the city's public.
There's, he's made some of his property.
And then the, the parking lot, uh, behind the park, or, or not the park, behind Gracie's. Is there any way we could paint like a white thing so the cars don't poke out?
Yeah.
Cause I barely miss those guys.
Yeah, we're, we're, our engineers gonna get with the, with the owner of the.
Or at least they'll stop things, something, fence.
We're, yeah, we're gonna talk to them about that, not just that, but other things down the right of the park.
Okay, that's not our car, okay, that's not our parking.
That's his private parking lot.
Right, right.
But it's our city right of way, it's our right of way.
So the owner.
The city's public right of way.
Okay.
And they can't hang cars up into the public.
Well, absolutely.
We may need to survey that, if that didn't get surveyed.
So we need, right, but we need to tell them that can't happen.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's bad. Yeah, I noticed they did that a lot on the parking lot before it's the other one behind the one. I, you know, many times I've come up and they did right out, and it's like, whoa, so.
Yeah, but there's something we, something they can come up with. We just need to find out what the options are.
And then while we, you know, we've got this nice new sidewalk and everything, and then they get to the stairway, and if you're in a wheelchair and you're, or you can't walk pretty good, are we ever gonna give them an alternative to get down? Uh, then we got what in the road?
My understanding from past is that to do any work there is going to be out of cost effect, it's gonna be very expensive to make that. But there's no reason, look at that, I, I mean, if that's what you guys want to have the city engineer do, I'm happy to add that to his project list as long as everybody agrees. Cause it'll cost you, it'll cost a bit too.
I just think that now that we've made it so nice, you really could go in your wheelchair and down there.
Or your stroller.
Or your stroller, alas.
Frank, if you're, well, I have two, two things, but um, related to this, um. A lot of our parking lots are really inaccessible to, um, people with handicapped, and handicapped or spoilt or anything, but. Um, and there was talk about, um, putting, kind of substituting, um, or making sure there's enough handicapped accessible spaces on one-on-one because they're not, there's nowhere you can go from any of our parking lots like this. So having more handicapped spaces down at the harbor, having more handicapped spaces on one-on-one to compensate for the lack even the impracticality of having handicapped, um, spaces in some of our parking lots that are just, you can't go anywhere from anywhere down these steep slopes, so, um, and we're not in compliance now with our handicap requirements in the city's parking lots, but maybe there's a way of, um, you know, mixing and matching, but having more on one-on-one and down in the harbor with things that fly that people need to get to. And then my other thing was, um, I didn't see it in your staff report, I was just wondering, um, Kim, if I may ask, if there's any progress, we were gonna change the ordinance, um, or talked about changing the ordinance to allow the Department of Revenue to do code enforcement, TRT code enforcement. Um, they said that they couldn't do it because we weren't in compliance and that we needed to change our ordinance if we wanted them to do that. Or, yep, or that they do, so the, I'm sorry, I'm hungover, but the whole point was we need, we, they wouldn't do, um, TRT enforcement because our ordinance wasn't something they could work with.
Right, cause it wasn't according to the IRS and the way that they needed it to be in order for them to, not, not enforcement as much as to run the program, which they would make sure that people who were supposed to pay, pay.
Yeah.
I, I haven't done anything on that.
Is that something that we could put back on the, the, the?
I can put that back on us.
Cause again, that's our source of funding.
Thank you.
I just have one quick comment about, um, the Seahack parking lot, I know it's not ours, but in addition to people, um, being, you know, parked up in the road, they've also been blocking the west entrance, entrance, when it's busy, they will just park as if it's a parking spot, but really it's the in, it's an entrance, exit, right?
Yeah.
Which is insane to try to navigate, to try to get out of that one little exit or in, it's also dangerous.
Yeah, it'd be probably just be, it'd be painted for sure.
Yeah.
At least have a grid there, with an entryway, and then the crisscross already called hash marks. And they're, they're kind of one man.
Is it only one way, right?
Yeah.
It's a one-way house?
Yeah, we, we often have arrows, if you need to have them.
No, what do we need now?
Oh, uh, yeah, I got it.
Oh, we did arrows.
And obviously you can point it out.
I, I think that's prior to confidence, so it's a little bit, you know, we need to discuss with the owners.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'm worried about that.
On the west side?
On the south, on the, yeah.
Any other comments on our activities?
I would like to ask a question or make a comment or something, and just to, you know, I'm kind of frustrated, Mayor, over the status of our, of our finances. Uh, we talked about the audit for a second. Uh, we put an RFB out for another CPA for support, but we just, I, I, we've been through three CPAs that we have lost since I've been here. And I find that highly unusual. I don't know why that's happening. Uh, and it doesn't leave me, I don't know what about, how the rest of you feel about this, but it leaves me with uh, a lack of confidence in our finances, that we don't have a CPA, that we don't have software that is, uh, should be working flawlessly and putting out, uh, our reports, our financial reports. Uh, I'm very concerned about this. I, I, I think everything else, you know, we're here to watch the finances of the city. Everything else is kind of a diversion from, uh, that, it's our attention, it takes it off what our primary job is here. Uh, I find it very unusual that we're looking at reports that are produced by hand and not by, uh, financial software. And I'd like to know what we're gonna do moving forward to keep a CPA on board. That's what we need more than anything else.
What we need to do, Counselor, is throw money at them, lots of money, because CPAs are very short-staffed and we have got to just try and hire somebody full-time, and I would make that recommendation that, you know, we get spend two hundred thousand dollars, I don't know, you know, we've got the money in the bank, and we've got the uh, budgeted funds ready to go, it's just, uh, timing, is that we need, we need somebody willing to take this on full-time to get us, uh, back up and, and going again, so that's what I'm gonna be looking for, is let's spend the money. We've always been nickel and diming it, and it's not working.
Well, that's a discussion we should have.
Yeah, absolutely.
When, when do you want to do it?
We can put it as an agenda.
The RFP that went out indicated we had, um, a hundred ninety thousand for to get these audits done.
Oh, okay, so you included that already. So let's wait and see what we think, uh, about first.
What was the timing on that RFP again? It went out a week later, so, um, early February, I think.
That's probably against the justice.
Well, what about our software situation?
We can't do anything until we have final budgeted numbers, and so Kim's been working with the cell, the software company that we signed up for, was it two years ago? And they're saying you need final numbers to put in so that you can go forward, so that's what we're hoping to finally get.
Put the final numbers in.
I did need out Isler to find out what the status of finishing up nineteen twenty, I haven't gotten a reply yet, so I will find out through then. Um, Isler was not doing a good job, which as you all know, which is why you all decided to let him go. Um, Moody, we hadn't worked for a long time, but he contributed to some of the issues we were having with the audits. And, um, the only other CPA that has been here besides Isler with me since I've been here has been Miss Sears.
And she really hasn't been with us either. Um, she had staffing issues and timing issues, so it's just, uh, we've just been unlucky.
Well, what do we do then?
We're working on it, she's working on it right now, every day, trying to get it resolved.
Oh, sure. Brady, um, have you had any update about plans to cut our North People Bay watershed this year?
Uh, they are clutter cutting, but they're not in the barrier of that watershed, it's called, uh, Salt Mist or something like that, it's a track that's, um, east, uh, kind of right behind the end of Collins, so if you go directly at the end of Collins east, it's, but it, it, it would affect the watershed for Seminole Creek, which is, uh, the one that kind of goes through the park and meets, um, suffered, but not someone trying to North Creek, uh, watershed. There is logs coming out of Collins now, and I did talk to Hampton, and he sent me a map that, and it's kind of vague, I have to get a, a map of their, all their tracks, but he said it's basically just straight east from the, uh, Collins Street. That's what he told me, but I was trying to get another map from a guy's name's Matt, Matthew.
Yeah, he's been trying to get information from them, cause I, as soon as he told me this was happening, I was like, ah!
Cause he has a log, a log truck.
Information, this might be able to accelerate some action from our watershed. So I thought, I thought you'd be very interested, I also said to make sure you let him know, you know, we got work on Collins, that we work on the bridge this summer.
Yes, I mean, we're, yeah. They're, they're, they're planning on doing most of it out of Rocky Creek, but right now they're currently going out of Collins. Which is a lot of, a lot of trucks coming through and there's so much construction, and then there's no detouring today, cause it's kind of out of destruction, so. It's a tight fit.
And I just also like to remind you, um, in case you guys have been on the fence about it, we're meeting the two candidates for the city planner, are coming in for meeting, meeting greet tomorrow. One will be here at eleven, the other will be here to greet. You're welcome to drop in and say hey.
Okay. Um, moving on, and are there any closing public comments this evening? Um, council comments, we are gonna plan an urban renewal meeting, is that right, next council meeting? Is ready, on?
I don't think we need hours, just to, um, schedule the housekeeping, you know, so housekeeping is at five thirty, right? So we don't, if you come at five thirty, we'll start the city house meeting up. So.
And so then are we gonna do a planning, uh, for the next year for urban renewal?
You don't need a longer meeting than that.
Yeah, yeah, we should do that, though.
Yeah.
Do we want to?
Let's get, let's set the schedule out, cause we could do that at the.
Okay, go, go set the schedule, okay, okay. And, uh, pardon me, one more thing, I just put a lot of the budget calendar. I gave in the packet, or I gave you the draft budget calendar, so to avoid what happened last year at the last minute, I will be putting together some, a form that I like people who want something and want a project or wanna do something that will fill in so that during the work session for the budget, people can say, here's what I wanna do. That will make sure that Brady and me and the staff have time to research anything we need to research and that sort of stuff. Um, we may not need all of the meetings that I booked, um, but I'd like you to, to keep your calendars as close to those as possible um, in case we do, I, I was very stressed last summer and I really don't want those to happen.
Good planning. And I think I talked to all of you about ordering, um, hoodies and that had.
That fell through.
So for the gift coming up this, um, this Saturday, um, those that you, those that you, that can make it, I really appreciate it, it's gonna be fun, we've got not only, um, speakers from across the nation, we've got one coming from England, oh, we've got representatives from, um, Joe Berkeley's office, Val Hoyle's office, um, Representative Gomber, both could join us, it's gonna be a really interesting day, so I hope all of you can, can join in. Council comments, do you wanna start, Counselor Beasley?
Thank you, Mayor, I think I stood it up tonight.
That's the whole one? There was a good email from, um, David Gomber about Trans April test.
Yes, yeah, that was a good one this year. I just wanna say that the guys that are doing the harbor job are really doing a nice job. Counting a hundred sixty-two pounds of pile driver today. The funniest one, though, was New Year's Eve, they did it at midnight, they did the pile driver twelve times, did you hear that?
Did they really?
Yeah, it was down when I heard.
Hysterical.
Ah!
Oh my god, that is just the perfect setting.
I, I would need to that.
The drop sign is being kept good, word.
Yes.
Um, I went down and watched the, I followed the dumpster till they came to Newport, so.
Evening, gentlemen.
Yeah, but, so they're gonna have all the stuff cleaned up at the end of the week.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm, I'm impressed.
I would pass that on to P and D so they can, I don't know, maybe.
The birds are appreciating it.
Thank you.
They're parking in all the muscles, all the, all the stuff.
Oh, that is true.
Interesting, that's true.
But you know, with all the shells in my hand, cause of the birds picking them up?
I have, yeah.
Oh my gosh.
Um, so, um, I've been concerned that Tally Race is expanding, it's gonna be nice, you know, the outdoor area, but the parking, they are parking, and I'm speaking to the planner tomorrow about this, um. In the sidewalk, people are parking, they're parking, the planner, this contract planner is saying, oh, but they've always done this, and it looks like they're in the right of way, but we can't do anything about it, but I didn't talk to him because to me, when you're gonna expand something, you have to bring things up to current code. You're not allowed to just keep, so, or we have to get the city to put, um, paint or something, but you know, the other day, there was this much space for me to kind of walk around two cars, and that's not, that's not the parking space, that's, so I'm gonna try to talk to them tomorrow to see what fell through the cracks, to see that that is allowed, because I don't think it should be.
Uh, Counselor, could I ask you a question? You said, you say you're gonna talk to them?
He's gonna be at the city planning.
Oh.
Meet the planner, so I'm gonna just, because I don't understand, um, what, how that can kind of happen, that they could grandfather these spaces and they have to provide, I think, twenty-two parking spaces? But the, two of the spaces or three of the spaces shouldn't be on public right of way, you can't even walk. Forget about somebody with a, a stroller or wheelchair. Yeah.
Talk about the ones on water line, right, from them. It is nice to have them.
Yeah.
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you, well, good meeting. All right, thank you.